Let's call to order the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Kuskudis. Tavropoulos. Mr. Vessi?
Here.
Ms. Veehill. Mr. Kulianos?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Here.
All right, that brings us to item number two, the approval of the minutes of the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Boy, that one goes way back. Does anybody have a motion to make?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes from November fifteenth.
I'll second the motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Yes.
Mr. Kulianos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. That brings us to item number three, the quasi judicial announcement and the swearing of speakers.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest this evening?
Yes, I had one brief conversation with one of the applicants today, just basically going over what he would be applying for, and I told him we would review it and vote accordingly. Very brief conversation and basically just outlining the facts of what he was going to be presenting today.
Okay, and which application number is that for?
Twenty-two dash nineteen.
Okay. Any other ex parte communications that need to be disclosed? Or conflicts of interest? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn.
All right, that brings us to item number four, application twenty-two dash oh seven. It's conditional use approval to allow alternative dimensional criteria for residential multifamily development located on the northwest corner of East Lime and South Gross Avenue in the residential multifamily zoning district. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, Ally Keane, Planning and Zoning. And just as a reminder, this application was previously heard by the Planning and Zoning Board last month. The applicant requested to defer the item to address some of the concerns that were coming up during the hearing, so this is the revised plans. Just as a reminder, this application is located at the corner of East Lime Street and South Gross Avenue. It's outlined in yellow here on the screen. The property is located within the RM Residential Multifamily Zoning District. It is in an area that has a mixture of both single and small-scale residential development. The applicants are here requesting conditional use approval of an alternative dimensional plan for the purpose of constructing a seven-unit multifamily apartment building on the property. They are here seeking modifications to the front side and rear yard setbacks. This is a look at the revised site plan. I've shaded in the building footprint in blue. Each unit will have access to the street via a porch, which all the porches are shaded in orange with a sidewalk connection in the darker orange. They'll also have an access point from the garage to each different unit, I'm sorry, from the garage, from the parking lot for each of the units. Parking will be provided interior to the site and access from the alley that's along the north property line. And again, there's a total of seven units proposed on this site. Residential projects that are in the RM zoning district are able to request an alternative dimensional plan where they can modify some of the zoning dimensional criteria. The intent behind this provision is to accommodate unique residential projects or projects that might be located on unusual or difficult sites. This requires conditional use approval for compatibility review. The table that's here on the screen includes all of the typical RM standards for setbacks in this column. The middle column is showing the original proposed, which you reviewed last month. And then the proposed revised is this outside column, and everything that's in red is what they're requesting modifications of. So just to review, the RM district does require a minimum front yard setback of twenty-five feet. Originally, they were asking for a minimum setback of zero feet. They've modified their plans to accommodate a minimum setback of four feet along the front. The typical required side yard setback is twenty feet. Originally, they're requesting six point three-three feet. It's been modified to a minimum three and a half feet in order to accommodate a larger setback from the street. And then the rear setback is still proposed at five feet when typically a twenty-foot rear yard setback would be required. One other thing to note, again, this is a single-story proposed project. The maximum height is seventeen feet, that has not changed in this revision. And the RM district would allow potentially to go up to forty-five feet. This is just looking at the same site plan, just calling out the closest portions of the building. Along the Lime Street frontage, the closest setback is four feet. Along the Gross Avenue frontage, the closest setback is six feet. The rear setback from the alley is still five feet. And then along this portion here is about three and a half feet. The applicants also provided a conceptual landscape plan with the revised submittal showing that there is opportunity to provide landscaping between the building and the property line, the sidewalk, with the additional setback area. Another thing to note is although they're asking for reduced setbacks, these are requested to be minimum setbacks. The four-foot required or requested front setback is not going to apply to the entire frontage on both Gross and Lime. The building does have different recesses, has different setback requirements, this is just the smallest portion. Another thing to note is at the corners, in order to accommodate for this visibility triangle, they've popped the building back and they have setbacks ranging from fourteen and a half, almost up to eighteen feet along that portion of the frontage. And along those same lines on the side setback, they're asking for a three and a half foot setback. It does range up to about four and a half feet at the furthest point, and this is about thirty-seven feet of the property line. The remainder of that property line is occupied by the retention area. They also provided a schematic section to kind of give you an idea of the distances between the edge of pavement to the fronts of the building. So here's the, this is looking along Lime Street. The edge of pavement of the street is here, approximately eleven feet or so between the edge of pavement and the property line. There's a sidewalk in between, and then there's area, again, where they can provide some landscaping between the building and the sidewalk. And then the front of the building, and then the area is pushed back to allow for a front porch for each of the units, which is shown here. They also provided elevation drawings for the project. One thing to note about elevation drawings, you're looking at a two-D picture, so it's not showing you the different recesses, but according to the site plans, all of the porches, which are these lightly grid areas here, will be recessed back. So it's not going to be a flat wall across the entire frontage. Just zooming back out of the neighborhood context, again, this is an area that has a mixture of both single and small-scale multifamily development. It's just outside of the city's special area plan where there's a mixture of uses, residential and commercial. The property is about a block away from the Pinellas Trail and walking distance to the heart of downtown. These are just some area photos, again. The subject property here to the front, immediately to the west of the subject site is a seven-unit cottage court, which has seven individual single-family homes on the property that has been there since the fifties. This is looking east along Lime Street. There is existing two-story multifamily across the street and a single-family home. This is looking north along Gross Avenue. Subject property is here, and again, the cottage court. There's one-story multifamily north of the site, and again, the two-story multifamily across the street. And looking south along Gross, where there's some single-family and the two-story multifamily. One thing that we talked about last month was there is an existing parking pad for the adjacent property, which is that cottage court. One thing that we had noted as a condition was that they needed to verify that the proposed building would not encroach into the visibility triangle for this parking pad. On the revised plans, they did provide that dimension, and it shows that it will not be an issue with the proposed building at this location. If this moves forward to the site plan process, we would again verify that that would not encroach into the visibility triangle. Looking at your review criteria, the alternative dimensional plan provision is intended to be utilized for unique residential projects that don't typically conform to the traditional zoning regulations. The proposed project does respond to the context of the neighborhood by utilizing a more urban layout with pushing this building towards the street and putting the parking interior to the site. The site is located in a mixed residential area that has a combination of both single-family detached homes as well as small-scale multifamily. The project is within the allowable density and will be only one story. By shifting the building close to the street, it does allow for the parking to be screened by the building. The use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It is not located within an environmentally sensitive area nor within a mapped historic district. It is not expected to adversely affect the adjoining property values. And public facilities are available to the site, and it does represent efficient and orderly development. With that, staff does recommend approval of resolution twenty-two dash oh nine. We do have two conditions, originally we had three. We removed the third one, which was talking about that visibility triangle. But the two conditions that we have are the proposed setbacks shall be considered to be minimums required and may be increased if necessary during the site plan process. Buffering of the parking lot from adjacent properties shall be addressed during the site plan process. And staff does believe that this is a unique residential project that meets the overall intent of the alternative dimensional plan provision and does represent context-sensitive infill development. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do board members have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. The schematic on Lime Street. Yeah, that one. I like your guys' pictures, huh? So, so the car there, where's that, where's that in? Because there's no garages or anything, like, I don't see where on Lime Street that the cars would be there.
So this is just, this is the street, I think the car is just representing that this is the public street.
Oh, it's a street, okay, I'm sorry, all right. Okay, I thought it was part of the.
Nope.
No, all right, good.
Yeah, the property line, just for clarification, is this vertical line here. So everything on this side is public right-of-way, and then this is the private property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Come on.
All right, are there any members of the public here that would like to make a comment? Do we have any emails or letters or anything on the subject?
No, we haven't received any.
Well, I guess in that case, I will entertain a motion.
Here, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to motion that we approve application number twenty-two dash zero seven, conditional use as submitted.
I second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Discussion, I approve.
Oh, yeah, is there, is there any discussion? Sorry, I was rushing you.
So, just for the folks that weren't here at the last meeting, this, this proposal had come forward before, and we asked them to move things back a little and also to give us renderings, because we're not as visual as, as some people are. And so we want to, first, I want to commend you on the schematics and the presentation and the, and the visuals. Let me ask you, the, does the staff, and I, this was actually a staff question, I apologize for going backwards. The, are you, this, this, one elevation drawing, that, that front one, are you comfortable that that blends well with the general community there?
I believe so. One thing that I have to say is like actual aesthetics such as paint colors, materials, things like that. The Land Development Code doesn't cover any of that. But I do think a one-story development with, you know, additional density on the property that's within the permitted density of the site, I think it is responsive to the, to the area.
Okay.
And I would, I would comment that I, that I think, I feel much better about the project as it is now. I think it's, it's a relatively small space, but it potentially makes a lot of difference. And I'm sorry we delayed your process, but I think it, it is an improved project as a result of the delay. And we appreciate your participation in making the changes.
We agree, I agree.
If there's no other discussion, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Yes, I approve.
Mr. Kulianos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, that brings us to item five, application twenty-two dash forty-three. A similar conditional use approval to allow for alternative dimensional criteria for residential multifamily development at the northeast corner of East Boyer Street and South Gross Avenue in the residential multifamily zoning district. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, Ally Keane, Planning and Zoning. So just to kind of provide some clarity with this application, so again, back at the March meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board had a similar request to what you're going to see here tonight. The board did ultimately recommend denial of that application. The applicant since has withdrawn their original application, and they resubmitted a new application addressing some of the concerns they heard from the board about their original submittal. So this represents a new application, although it's very similar to what you reviewed previously. As a reminder, this property is located at the intersection of East Boyer Street and South Gross Avenue. Again, it's located in the residential multifamily zoning district. This particular property is immediately adjacent to the city's special area plan to the north. We're again seeking alternative dimensional plan approval for reductions of the front, side, and rear yard setbacks, and this is to construct a six-unit multifamily building on this property. This is a look at the site plan provided. Again, the building footprint is shaded in blue. Each unit will have access from the street as well as the parking lot. The orange shaded areas are the recessed porches, and the dark orange areas show the connections to the pedestrian sidewalk. This is a look at the proposed dimensional plan here. The applicants are requesting a minimum front setback of four feet. They typically require a twenty-five-foot setback in this zoning district. They're requesting a minimum three-point-six-foot setback for the side, which is the east property line. Typically, that'd be a twenty-foot setback requirement. And then similarly to the rear yard, they're requesting a three-point-three setback instead of a twenty-foot setback. They're still proposing a one-story development that's at a maximum height of seventeen feet. And there's the site plan just showing the closest areas of the building to the property lines. Along, yeah, our Gross Avenue, there's a four-foot setback here, the rear setback, three-point-three feet, the side setback, three-point-six feet, and then along Boyer Street, the closest setback is five and a half feet. This is a look at the conceptual landscape plan for this project, very similar to what you just reviewed. And just like that project, although they're asking for reduced setbacks, it's not applying to the entire frontage of the building. There's different areas, such as with the recessed porches here, where the building is recessed and not a flat wall across the front of the street. And then at the intersection, the closest setback is thirty-two feet from the street. This is the schematic section for Boyer Street, and this shows that there's approximately ten feet between the edge of pavement of the street to the property line, and there's the sidewalk, and there's area for some landscaping in between the building and the porch that's recessed from the building, for clarity. And the elevation is very similar to last project. Looking at the neighborhood context, again, it's in the same general area, being that it is also in an area where there is some low-intensity commercial uses along Lemon Street. One thing of note is there are some existing vacant lots to the east and west of the site that will likely be redeveloped in the future. And just a few images, I know you saw these last week or last month. Two-story resident or multifamily across the street, looking west along Boyer, north along Gross Avenue, where there's some existing commercial, and south along Gross. As far as your review criteria, the alternative dimensional plan again is intended for unique projects that don't typically conform to your traditional zoning standards. This proposed project is responsive to the context of the neighborhood. The site is located in a mixed-use area with a combination of single and multifamily residential and low-intensity commercial uses. The project is again within the allowable density for the site, and it's only going to be one story. Shifting the building closer to the street allows for parking to be screened behind the building. The use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and it is not located on an environmentally sensitive area or within a mapped historic district. It's not expected to adversely affect the adjoining property values, and it can be served by existing city facilities, and it does represent efficient and orderly development. Staff does recommend approval of resolution twenty-two dash thirteen to allow for the alternative dimensional plan. We have two conditions with this recommendation. The first is the proposed setback shall be considered the minimum required and may be increased if necessary during site plan process. And buffering of the parking lot from adjacent properties shall be addressed during the site plan process. And again, staff does believe that this does represent the intent of the alternative dimensional plan criteria and is responsive to the neighborhood. And I can answer any questions.
Do board members have questions for staff? Seeing none, does?
Oh, sorry, we were talking behind your back. I have two small ones. Hi, Ally.
Hello.
Good to see you. Ally, it's a, it's a minor detail, but on the pages that are labeled alternative dimensional plans, we have the macro and then the micro, and the micro shows a front of thirty-two. That, I'm just using that for reference, but in the lower right-hand corner, specifically the front setback, on the macro plan, it's labeled as five-point-five feet, and on the micro plan, it's labeled as six-point-five feet. It could just be a Scribner, or it could be something else.
So actually, what I was trying to show here is that, so that five-point-five setback is actually from the building front to the property line. This was showing that there, you know, the porch railing is six and a half feet, so there's different setbacks is what I was trying to highlight, but that is pretty confusing.
Nice, okay, but at least you knew exactly what I was referring to. Okay, then I have one more, and this actually might be a lead-in to a question for developer. If we look at the pretty pictures, and we're looking at the subject property, and at the sidewalk on the property side, there is an existing curb that is actually made out of chopped granite, and that's kind of a product that is ancient and at the same time newly installed to be matching kind of a historical item. And if I looked at the property line, it looks like the property line actually extends within to the sidewalk. I could be wrong, but my question is, is that to be preserved as part of the project?
That I will defer to the applicant.
Okay, we'll do that then. If I have that right, if I'm seeing that right, that's that unique four-foot-long, eight inches high, broken-face granite product. That's it, those were my questions.
All right, if there's no further questions for staff, would the applicant like to comment?
Hello, my name is Sam Raldefari. I'm not aware, to be honest with you, that it's granite, but if it is of any historical value, I don't see any reason why we couldn't preserve it. You're just alerting me to something to pay attention to.
You know, it's, it's a fair question, and since you were here talking about it, as I understand it, now, I could be wrong, because the picture might not be right, but this is how I understand this. Once upon a time, those pieces of granite were used as ballast as ships that came across the Atlantic, and then they were offloaded, and so they weren't necessarily cut just for curbs, they were actually ballast pieces. Now, I could be all wet on that, get the pun, over there, okay. But if they were, they're actually kind of attractive, and if it weren't designed into your project, then some demolition crew or greater wouldn't know any better, and he'd move these really unique pieces of granite that we have purchased as a city as part of some of our reconstruction projects or improvements. We've paid for those to put those in to keep that historical character. So maybe just take a pass by, and if I'm right, great, and if I'm not, do what you think is right.
I've been to the site, I didn't take that much detail. It seemed to me, but that's memory now, that this, what you see is a remnants of what may have been a building there at a time, because there was a lot of concrete that I noticed. But if it's, if it's a granite, I'm a Mr. Recycler, to get to know me. So anything that I can reuse again, we do.
Right, reduce, reuse, recycle.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that something staff could look into?
We, yeah, we can take a look at it and see if there's anything.
Oh, I didn't mean to cause any, any additional work. It's either old rubble concrete, or it's broken-face granite. You did, you did. Yeah.
Indeed, and it's on the record.
It's a good word.
And I am on the record to say that, that we would look at if it is of any prospective values, yeah. I'll be the one probably taking it now myself.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, if, when this moves forward, if the conditional uses approved by the board commissioners- by the board commissioners, they'll have to go through site plan process, so you'll have an opportunity to see it again. Or yes, it goes to planning and zoning for site plan. So there may be more details to come.
Okay. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, item 22-43.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Andrew Otis?
Yes.
Mr. Colianos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, that brings us...
Take a comment on...
Sure.
The, I'm excited to see your project develop. I think this, I think you guys would agree that this is how government should work. We work together, and I think we, you accomplished what you needed to, and we as a city feel more comfortable about the project. So I think we're all, I think we should all be happy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for working with us.
Thank you, guys.
That brings us to application numbers, or item number six, application 2219. It's about 1093 South Florida Avenue. It is annexation, future land use map amendment, and a zoning map amendment, all three at this time. Does the staff have a presentation?
Yes, thank you. Pat McNeese, Principal Planner. This is an application for annexation of a single lot located here at the corner of South Florida Avenue and Curlew Place. And this annexation is the, kind of the motivation for this one is that this applicant needs city water and sewer service, so they need to annex into the city, apply for annexation to receive that service that is available to that lot. As you can see, and this kind of illustrates, everything that's shaded is within the city limits. This portion of South Florida Avenue going down south of Curlew Place is still in unincorporated Pinellas County. I'll just hit on the standards real quick. So these are the zonings and future land use. Residential suburban is the county zoning. We are proposing residential suburban city, I'm sorry, future land use map to correspond with that. The county zoning is R3, single-family residential. We're proposing R100, single-family residential. Your annexation criteria, this is adjacent to the city limits to the north. The property to the north is in the city, so this lot is adjacent to the city limits and is contiguous. The property can be served by the city. We have water and sewer service to this lot, actually along Curlew Place, and the remainder of the services can be provided. The owner has agreed to comply with the city's criteria and land development code. There has been a single-family residence initiated. It's under construction on the site. The owner has, now has the opportunity to annex, of course. As you all know, with the municipal election, that opportunity was delayed for a time. The owner did begin construction of the home and is now processing the annexation. The lot density and density under county residential suburban and under city residential suburban allows one unit, so that's the highest intensity for this lot. It meets the R100 lot dimensional criteria, so, and it is being built with a home, so that is the limit of the density for this lot. With respect to your future land use, again, we're going to residential suburban, which is consistent with the rest of the street and with the current county future land use. And we have a proposed zoning of R100 that's consistent with that residential suburban future land use, and allows basically mainly single-family development, which this lot is being developed as. Let's see if there's anything else that we can highlight. Those criteria again are a little bit repetitive of your annexation. The property can be served, and so staff is recommending approval of the annexation ordinance, the future land use map change amendment, and the rezoning for this property. Are there any questions?
Do members of the board have questions for staff?
I have a few. Is there precedent to annexing just a single residential lot in town prior to this?
Yeah, we have done that at least, I want to say, two or three times since I've been here.
Okay. There was an issue at, it might have been the last meeting we had or the meeting prior to that, where there were, somebody was annexing a completed or almost completed project, and there was concerns about whether the standards were up to our construction standards versus the county's. Is that an issue here?
I would say, obviously, the building code, Florida building code, I can't speak to that as an expert, but I'm assuming county standards are at or the same as ours as far as the construction of the structures on site. The lot is a conforming lot to R100. I don't have a plan of the residence being built, so I don't know what the setbacks on those are. If they do not conform with R100, they would come in as existing non-conforming setbacks. The owner would not be able to then, or any future owner, add-on or, you know, any of those types of things unless it was in conformance with our setbacks.
Would we have inspect, would our inspectors inspect the project? Because I've seen it's at, it's, I mean, there's block up, but there seems to be a lot of construction left. Would our, would our inspectors inspect the property?
Yes, so the day it is annexed and goes into the city, the permit is transferred over to the city, and the city would do the, pick up on the inspections.
And all the cost to connect to the utilities is paid for by the applicant, right? Whatever normally would have to be paid.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, and you kind of segued it right into it. Hi, Pat, thank you. And I'll just repeat what you said, that you weren't submitted, actually, I'll go back a step. This house is being built. It's well along, walls are up.
Sure.
Trusses are probably being delivered. And it strikes me as unique or odd that now is the time that's being asked for annexation, and I know we've covered this before. It also strikes me as odd that we weren't submitted a site plan for this home. I just want to say that out loud, but I would like, just to reiterate and ask the question for the record, you don't know if the home is going to meet the setbacks delineated as R100 under the city of Tarpon Springs?
No, I don't.
And thus, therefore, if we were to approve annexation today, this home could be built according to the setbacks under Pinellas County, and then conveniently slide in under our more stringent setbacks and just be considered non-conforming?
Our R100 setbacks are more stringent than R3, which is what the applicant is in. Again, I don't know what the actual setbacks are. I will tell you, going back and forth, the applicant did, we talked about R100 because to the north we have R100. The R3 zoning at Pinellas County actually has 6,000 square foot lots, so it could be that an R70A, single-family, is more appropriate. Those setbacks are much closer to the Pinellas County R3, but they're still a little bit more stringent. You know, if the applicant wanted to go to R70A, we could, we could delay and re-advertise for that zoning and let the annexation go forward, but yeah, we have...
But forgive me for interrupting, but at the end of the day, let's just cut right to the chase. If, is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Okay, super. So we'll clarify that with the applicant, that the fact that you weren't presented clarification on this very important setback issue that we had highlighted and read in the previous application, that we could, if we approved this, in fact, approve a home that has setbacks that do not meet our current zoning guidelines? Yes or no?
You would be annexing a piece of property and...
But it's not a piece of property, it's a house under construction. Am I...
Yes.
I mean, well along...
Whether it's ever finished, or, yeah, I mean, but what's before...
Forgive me for putting you on the spot. I just, we have discussions about annexations all the time, and this is another, I'm going to call it the way that it is, forgive my, another very suspicious annexation.
And I'd like to answer completely and correctly. This is from our perspective, annexation of a piece of property. There is a house being built on it, and the setbacks are...
Why didn't staff ask for a site plan of the house?
Wait, can I have a point of order, Mr. Chair, just so, do you mind for a clarification?
No, go ahead.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Mr. Vessi, for interrupting, but I just want to make sure that I let you guys know before we get too far down this road. The annexation is a quasi-judicial item on your agenda that requires you to look at the criteria. The criteria in your packet, they were on the, on the overhead as well, and there's only certain things that you are to consider, which is why you weren't given a site plan review. So whether or not there is a home, and I'm not saying that your questions aren't valid, I'm just saying for the purposes of the three applications before you, and what you are to consider in order to make your decision, whether or not a site plan was provided to you is irrelevant to the criteria.
I politely disagree. I think that that is...
And I appreciate that, Mr. Vessi.
Is that this is not a lot, this is a home under construction, and I think it's perfectly reasonable that a site plan would have been submitted with our package.
And I understand that, Mr. Vessi, I appreciate that, but my job as your legal advisor is to advise you on the law. And I give my little speech at the beginning of every single meeting about quasi-judicial proceedings, so I would be remiss in not doing my duty to advise you that these are, two of the three of these applications before you are quasi-judicial in nature. I'm not here to make the decision, I'm just here to make sure that, that I clarify for the record and that the board is well aware that there are certain criteria that you are supposed to adhere to, and your decision should be based on those criteria and not something that is outside of the scope of those criteria.
So what would be outside of the scope of my question in regards to the site plan? What part of that is outside the scope?
Well, if you look at your review criteria for annexations, because the way that you had couched that question, and I don't know what else it would be in relation to either the Flume Amendment or the rezoning, and maybe perhaps it is part of the rezoning, which is also quasi-judicial in nature, and needs to be, those criteria need to be followed. So, but you're, you couched it in with the annexation. As you can see, there are only three criteria to consider with the annexation, and the site plan would not address any, one of those three criteria.
Fair enough, I understand.
And I'd like to add, the applicant is here and should be able to tell you what the setbacks are, so hopefully that will help.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Does any other board members have questions for staff? All right, would the applicant like to make a statement?
I'd like to just touch on some of the things you said or asked. Omar Abbas, Abbas Development. When I purchased the property and was going through my due diligence, it came to me that there was sewer within 300 feet. When you're, when you're within 300 feet, you're forced to connect to sewer. It's not a choice that I'm making last minute, none of this is last minute for me. I knew that I needed to connect, but there, but this, the county, when I met with them, told me that there was access to it and access to water like the rest of the street, so that was where I went on with my plans. Once I submitted my permits, I think back in September, I don't remember when, in September, we were going through the motions, and then as I got to the utility towards the end of the permitting process, they told me I needed to speak to planning and zoning about connecting. When I reached out to them, they told me that I needed to annex because I'm on the property cusp and, or whatever you call it, right on the line to use the utilities. And because I'm there, I'm not one-in, I'm directly frontage to the city, I had no problem with that. I grew up in the city, I've been part of many things with the city, so I was happy to annex, so I told them, no problem. Then I was informed that I couldn't do that, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't start until this time. By then, I was already almost done getting my permit, so I just continued. At that point, I was told I needed to, and I was told that I can, and it was voluntarily, and I wanted to voluntarily do that, but I wasn't going to delay the project, you know, six months to, you know, when I know the building code and some of your other questions I'll answer as well. So we went ahead with our permit, we got our permit, and we started construction. As soon as we got close enough to this meeting, I submitted the paperwork that I was requested to submit. Nothing I was, I received, requested, anything, or I've worked with the city many times on projects, I would have provided them everything that I have regarding site plan, plans, the type of construction we're doing, so you, you know, I would have provided that if that was part of a prerequisite to this. So that, that's regarding how this all came about. Second thing that you brought up was the building code. We follow, I build several homes in Tarpon right now and for the past several years. It's built to code and above code in every way. The county requires the same inspections as the city, and I was told soon as, if the annexation went through, then the city would be doing all of our inspections, which I prefer. So, or whatever the process is, is never annexed before, so no problem with that. As far as the R100 and all this conversation about that, as, we check off all the boxes except for the setback. So our front yard, R100 is 25 feet in the city of Tarpon, and our house is at 20 feet, so it's five-feet difference. On the side yard, it's 10 feet, we're at 6 feet. The side street is 15 feet in the city, and we're at 10 feet, and the rear yard is 30 feet, and we're at 20 feet. So it's a difference of five, four, five, and 10 difference, which meets, I believe, the other zoning there, but was told that none of that is part of this. But our lot fits, everything else is satisfactory. There are other things that the county requires us as permits, more than the city does. They require drainage plan from a civil engineer, which I had to provide. We wouldn't have that, you know, had to provide that if it was for the city, so that was done. The sidewalks, the county requires five foot, city requires four foot, we're going to put sidewalks all the way around the property. We do have a privacy wall around the property that starts on the property line inward, it does not go off on the other side of the property, and in the city of Tarpon, it's four-foot height in the front, and we're at three foot in the front. So we were also required to provide visibility triangles for the corner, both corners, which we did, and for the driveway, which I've never seen, but also our driveway complies as well. So, trying to touch on everything you have or ask or concerns about.
Any questions for the applicant?
I do. It's nice to meet you. My name's Justin.
You too.
And I'll just repeat a couple of things you said. You regularly build homes in the city of Tarpon Springs.
Correct.
So you're completely aware of what the setbacks are for homes in the city of Tarpon and Springs?
Yes, I am.
At what point did you realize that your home did not meet those requirements?
Well... Well, well, when I bought the pro, it's not city, it's, it's county. So when you purchase the property, you follow, you look at the building code for the county, and that's what I did. And I follow them according to the county.
That wasn't my question.
Okay. When did I find out? During, after I submitted for my permit, during the permitting process?
Okay. And then, at what point did you know that you were gonna be annexing to the city of Tarpon Springs?
Well, I was told that I needed to, but it was also voluntarily on my, my, my choice.
So what happens if your annexation is denied?
I'm not sure. I mean-
He, if it's denied, and let's just say it's denied, he would be charged the surcharge for the water and sewer service, just like any other unincorporated resident is.
I have paid all my impact fees with the city. I mean, everything is, so there's no difference for me on anything, other than wanting to be part of the city.
So I'll ask one more question. Do you think it's fair that you can build a home that doesn't meet the setbacks that the person across the street has to meet?
I'm not, I don't think that it's unfair that I followed what I was supposed to be building.
Okay.
And, and, and I've seen a lot of people, in fact, just in front of me, request set, different setbacks and get granted, so I'm not asking for that upfront. I'm following what I'm supposed to be following to build the house.
Was it your intention all along to build the house under county guidelines and then annex into the city of Tarpon Springs?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, do we have members of the public here wishing to speak on this item? I believe you'll need to be sworn then. Oh, you did, okay. State your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Clyborne. My address is 1111 South Florida Avenue, Tarpon Springs, and that's in unincorporated Pinellas County. And I'm a neighbor to this property. And as many of us other property owners have questions about this property going up, you know, we see a really large home going up in a small lot, and, you know, we're looking at it as neighbors, it's like, where is the septic system going? This is the county. And, you know, and now we hear it's getting annexed, so it gets sewer, and I think I just heard that he can actually pay for water and sewer without being annexed. Is that correct? Do we know this? I thought you mentioned that, that he could pay fees.
Should I answer public questions?
Sure.
Was the question, does he have to pay for city water and sewer? I don't know.
Does he need to be annexed to, to actually connect into the city water?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
He's required because he's adjacent to the city.
Is he adjacent?
To the north, across the street.
I thought the properties had to be more of what they consider contiguous.
A, a street does not interrupt contiguous. So this property here is what he's adjacent to.
Okay. All right. The thing that comes out of all of this is that if you're going for the county, you know that you can't tie into the, the sewer system. So you gotta have septic. And the design of this home has no room hardly for a septic system. And it's kinda like, what's happening here is someone's gaming the county and the city to build a really large property and yet get the benefits of both. One, he gets the large property, and two, he gets the sewer without the septic system. And when you look at the numbers, I think you missed some of it. When, in Tarpon, with the R-100, it's 25 total on the side setbacks. And if you got a street on the side, that has to be 15. So now you're at 15 and 10. So that leaves basically, this lot's 110 by 100, it leaves you a footprint of depth of 75, no, 55 max and 75 in width. And the current structure is right around 72 in depth, blowing that 55 quite a bit. And the width is pushing around 81 to 82 feet. So you got quite a bit that's been blown. It's kinda like this thing was done knowingly in saying, I'm just gonna do it, and I'm gonna get my way, and I'm gonna build this big house. And for the rest of us, that's really not a fair thing in that we all try to do the right thing, do the regulations. And as a builder who's built in Tarpon, he should know if he's gonna go into Tarpon, what he's up against. And I also contend that if you're building a home, this is one of the things you would have to figure out before you really get started, is where is the septic and sewer? You know, you know, how's this gonna function? I mean, you just don't throw plans out there, it's like, whoops, guess we gotta have some drains somewhere. I mean, this is not really good. So, you know, I think what needs to be done, if you're looking annexing, is really get into the nitty-gritty of this and get a site plan and look at what's going on, because I personally don't believe the story we were presented before. I, I don't believe someone can be in this type of business and not do those type of things. It's kinda like going to a car mechanic and say, your car is fine, and it's got three tires on it, you know? Not, not quite cutting it here. And, you know, this seems like something that was kinda premeditated. Also, approval, are there any adverse effects from this thing being approved? I don't know the standards on the walls, but the perimeter wall going around this right now, but the county is supposed to be 6 feet, counting the block that's there, it's about 9 feet on the backside. I don't know how close is the property line, but if that's gonna be filled 3 feet, and you've only got about that much more property, that's gonna put an interesting drop-off to adjacent properties for drainage and whatnot else, when we get the heavy rains that we're all familiar with in this part of the state. So, you know, that's some of our concerns as neighbors. We follow the rules, they seem like they're being broken blatantly. It seems like he's trying to build something for the county and then jump in, oh, now it'll be part of the city. That way I can hook up to my sewer, don't have to worry about septic. And I think it's just setting a precedence that's unacceptable. Anyone got any questions? No?
Well, this is, I think this is a question for, for you, Pat. Again, I, I think that the question is, if it's denied, well, maybe it's for the applicant, but if it's denied and you haven't allowed any space for septic, what do you do?
He-
Were you, were you intending to put a, were you intending to put a septic in? Yes, please.
I'm not allowed to, I'm not allowed to have septic.
Right.
Because the sewer is there. We all have septic.
The Department of Agriculture does not allow you, if you're within 300 feet, and I reached out to the city actually about that line.
This true?
Yeah, he can't do a septic.
Okay. So all along, he would have to have tied in?
Yeah, he is, he is close enough to city sewer, he, he has to hook up the city sewer. Therefore, if it's denied, it would, he would pay the surcharge for city water and sewer and hook up the city sewer.
So he could be hooked up without being annexed?
Well, if the annexation is denied-
Right.
It's staff's contention that the criteria are met and that it should be approved. If it's denied, theoretically, there would be a finding that one of the criteria is not met, but-
But he still has a pathway to get there.
This is the pathway. We're in it right now. This, this, after this board, it will go to the Board of Commissioners for a decision.
Now that you know that he's blatantly violating what he could actually build in Tarpon, you know, what's your incentive for approving something with huge violations on a footprint on a property? I mean-
Should I, should I continue?
You can ignore one rule. What else are you gonna ignore?
Yeah, so, so looking at the criteria, different setbacks aren't necessarily going to, going to, the, the criteria are still met, the city can still serve the property. It, it's got to rise to something that would impact the city facilities or make it not possible to serve the property, something like that, one of your criteria. As you guys know, and, and we all know, the city ends up annexing projects that are non-conforming all the time, including existing projects that were built years ago. The question is, is there, are there issues that, that rise to the level that the criteria are not met? On this one, sta, it's staff's opinion that there are not. This board and Board of Commissioners will, will make that decision as to whether they feel that.
But I think it's pretty obvious, anyone in this business would know pretty quick what they're up against. And have blatantly ignored it and just like, well, I'm gonna build to this, but I'm gonna hook up anyway, and guess what, I'll violate their stuff, but that's okay, 'cause I'm already started. You know, it's like, I'll ask for forgiveness versus permission. And I just think that's a little bit shady, especially someone who's in this business should know better. It's just, you know, so, and, you know, another question is, why have any setbacks at all, you know, stated if you're not gonna wanna follow through with them, if you're gonna give permission for the people to come along and break them? I mean, it's pretty significant. You go from, you know, allowed 55 versus almost 72 feet in depth, it's pretty big growth. 75 to about 82, that's pretty big.
If, if he is annexed, he pays the same cost, right, to connect?
Yeah, he pays to connect and he pays-
He pays the same cost to connect whether he's annexed or not annexed, right?
Uh, there's a surcharge if you're in the county.
Yeah, he pays 25% on all costs, connection, his water bill, his sewer-
He pays more if he's not annexed.
That's correct.
But then, what are the economic advantages for him being annexed?
The economic-
For us? What, what are the benefits for us? So when you, when you, when you approved it, when you, now, when you recommended approval, can, explain to, I, I think, explain to the audience what the thought process was?
Yeah, so we have-
And why you thought it was beneficial to the city to do so?
We can revisit the criteria. So we have to decide, so, so whether there's a benefit to the city of annexation is actually not one of the criteria. Okay, that, that is something that, that I guess you can discuss, but it's not one of the criteria. The first one is whether it is contiguous and whether it would create what's called an enclave. So you can't annex a piece of property that's completely surrounded by the other jurisdiction and vice versa. That's an enclave, okay? We had one recently that, that we had that issue with. This one is contiguous to the city's municipal limits, so it meets that criteria. The impact upon public facilities, you know, I'm trying to think of a good example, but this one, it's an existing lot, it's already, the site is already developed, it's part of this subdivision, I guess that, that these people live in. It's an older subdivision, planted in the 50s, and it's, it's built, I think, except for maybe this lot and another lot. So it, it's an existing, the site work is done, and the water and sewer and the roads are in, so there really is no impact, the city has capacity to serve the lot. So that, that criteria is met. The planning area question, that's in your staff report, as you know, that is something we don't consider at this point, because the agreement was struck by the courts, that's still in your code, probably needs to go away, but it's still in there. The owner is building at a density that is at the same as the county, so it meets that future land use map category. And the proposed designations, again, are not more intensive, so the uses that can be developed on the property and the density, intensity is the same as the county. So it does meet all those annexation criter, criteria.
And let me, can I ask the, your, your name again, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Robert Clyborne.
Robert?
Yes.
Okay. I'm John.
Hey, John, good to meet you.
Nice to meet you. And I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious or being sarcastic in any way. If they're annexed or not annexed, and the houses, I mean, I see, I've driven, I drive by there all the time, it's pretty much up-
Yeah, it's-
What is the detriment to the neighborhood above and beyond the house that's there anyways? What is, I don't, I don't, I'm not quite understanding the, I, I understand the fairness doctrine and all that, but it's there, whether they're in the city or not in the city, how does that affect the other homeowners there?
Well, there's a couple. Well, one is the detriment of, you know, why should we even have rules and regulations if people can blatantly violate? I mean, this had to be known ahead of time. So, I mean, if you're in this business and you don't know these type of things, then you shouldn't be in the business. So I think you're getting gamed and the county's getting gamed, and we in the neighborhood is like, oh, look what this dude did, you know? So-
But what's your remedy? What's your remedy to this?
The remedy is that-
I don't understand what you're, you're, you're just saying, we don't want them to be part of the city, but it, you're not assuming that the house is gonna get torn down, right?
I don't know. I don't make up those rules. I mean, if it verts to the county, it may not even be to spec the county when they start inspecting, 'cause, you know, it's really pushing the limits of what it can fit on there. But that, irregardless of that, the, you know, the biggest concerns probably are that, you know, runoff from a huge property on a small lot to the neighbors, as much as it's been built up, that could be a concern. And the other is, is it truly, you know, gonna allow people to see that intersection? Because recently, I went on an intersection walking my dog, and I just sat there with my dog at the corner, and it's like, all right, let me count 100 cars. Out of 100 cars, three, get three fingers up, stopped for the stop signs. Everyone else just cruises on through there. So now we've got something that's, you know, with big walls and, you know, a big house that's gonna cut down on visibility and, you know, could lead to more accidents at the corner. That's one fault process on this. But, you know, personally, I don't care what gets built there, it's just about how you go about doing something. And, you know, this kinda smells. I think anyone can think about this and, you know, see the situation like, you know, this is not on the up and up, something's, you know, somebody's getting gamed here and, you know, after everything's happened in this world in the last couple of years, the last thing I want is, you know, government's getting and playing and doing all kinds of stuff just to do whatever. And, you know, you have rules and for a reason, if you're not gonna ignore, if you're gonna ignore them, then, you know, what's the benefit of any of us to pay any attention to what anyone says? So, you know, something to chew on. If you got any other questions, I'll try to answer them and, you know, it's unfortunate. You should know this information beforehand. You know, something being built, you ought to have the information at hand, it's like, wow, look at this. But you don't supposedly. So, you know, a little due diligence would probably help, you know, make your job easier. You know, the rule of 5Ps, prior planning prevents poor performance, you know? Pretty simple. Any other questions? No?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Pat, let me ask you, if, if this wall is a hazard, a visual hazard, is that something that we, we address in the city?
The applicant has, has stated that they have to meet county visibility triangles. I do not know if those are the same or more restrictive than ours. I do know, the other things mentioned, drainage, definitely is, as you all know, we do not require any drainage control on single-family lots, and the county is pretty stringent on drainage. The height of the wall in the front yard is 3 feet, I think is what the applicant mentioned. That's a county standard, ours is 4. At a visibility triangle, if you have a fence or a wall, it's gotta be 3 feet or less. So I'm not sure where the wall is, but, you know, when they come into the city, they would have to, you know, if there were issues with the visibility triangle as the city standards go, then we would have to, you know, we could identify those and see what the remedy is. But if the wall's 3 feet, it, it's met. If it's not in the triangle, it's met.
Are there, can, and this is a city attorney question as well, can we have those qualifications in this vote about any of those inspection things? about any of those inspection things?
No, outside the purview of what you're being asked to determine.
Is there a floor area coverage ratio on residential property like this in the, in the zoning? Or is that mostly only on commercial sites?
That's not commercial. Our one hundred has a minimum floor area requirement of twelve hundred feet. Um, but no, the future land use or the zoning only have floor area ratios for non-residential.
Impervious service, service ratio for residential R-one-hundred, City of Tarpon Springs versus county?
It's the same thing. There is no standard for non, for residential, only for non-residential for the city. I do not know what the impervious surface ratio would be for the county, uh, if it's different.
Are there other members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none?
I have a question, actually, for Pat, if that's okay. So, Pat, maybe the city attorney as well. What, what we're being asked to consider is the lot itself, so I'm understanding, because I think that's kinda gray at this point, it's been going back and forth. Just the property, the lot, not the building on it at all, not the structure, the stage of the home. Just the property and whether or not it meets the city's criteria and whether or not we're annexing it. When I say property, I mean the dirt on the corner, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
A hundred percent. So, by way of example, there could have been, there could be an existing structure on that parcel, a fully-built, single-family home, built to Pinellas County standards. It could have been built, I don't know, two thousand and two. And you would not be able to ask any of these questions. You wouldn't be given a site plan for what was built at that time. Um, the setbacks would, would be what they would be, um, and they would be looking to voluntarily annex into the city. Um, perhaps they had been paying that, uh, uh, you know, the surcharge that they were being charged for so long because they can't get, um, septic at that location. And so, they, and then all of a sudden, now they're contiguous to the city, because all these other properties have annexed in, and they have the opportunity to annex into the city. It wouldn't matter, the criteria are still the same. The, the criteria for the rezoning are still the same, the criteria for the annexation are still the same. The land use map is legislative. Um, it's, I mean, that's just, that's the same county-wide anyways. Um, but it, it wouldn't matter what was on the property. Um, it only matters if you meet the, the three criteria for the annexation, and I think there's five for the rezoning.
Okay.
And just to elaborate on that, um, people that cannot annex in because they are not contiguous, but they are in the city's water and sewer service area, they connect up, they record a restrictive covenant on the property saying that at such time they become contiguous, they will apply to annex in, and they pay the twenty-five percent. So, those properties may build, obviously will build to county standards, um, even though in the future, they will have to annex even though, uh, when they become contiguous, if they do.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I think that's where, and I don't like to speak for others, but it sounds like, based on the questions that we have from, you know, my fellow board members and, and the gentleman that spoke, is that the, the issues appear to be with the stage of construction that the building i- is at, uh, but that's not something we're to consider anyway, again, it's, and, and to piggyback on the city attorneys, and Pat's your point, it's the property and whether or not we can annex the property and nothing to do with the building. So, thank you for clarifying that for me.
All right, uh, if there's no further public comment, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
There's one more comment.
No, okay, sorry.
Okay, Andy C. Marcos, eleven-ten.
Can I please swear in? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, but I have been told that these things do not have to be quasi-judicial. I've had lawyers tell me this, and, and sometimes the city, the city, they, whoever they are, they kind of say, oh, we want it to be quasi-judicial, so you kind of intimidate the public, and they think, and then you sometimes do it to intimidate, I know too many lawyers. You sometimes do it to intimidate board members, so you think your hands are tied on this. And then questions get asked, oh, look, we'll get this one in. Okay, but, so what you're saying, any, I've lived on that street for fifty-some years. My parents built the house I live in. Um, and some of my neighbors just added on to, they have like a lot and a half. A lot of you have a lot and a half, and you added a garage. Robert and Linda added a garage. They had to comply. They have it way setback, even more setback than their house. So, what you're saying, I guess, you're letting all the citizens of Tarpon Springs think, we can do whatever, gee, maybe I'm gonna add on to my house right up to, first of all, you're talking about sidewalks. We don't even have any sidewalks on that street, we never have. So, you can have one house with a sidewalk, um, so we can all, what, just do what we want, right? I guess, do what we want and hire whoever we want. We're in the county, and we'll just start building whatever we want right up to the road, and it's gonna be okay. All right, I'm done, sorry.
Would, would, yeah, the applicant like to rebut?
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, but I feel a little violated now, after being told that I purposely done something. So, I just wanted to clear something. So, Pat, I needed to connect a sewer, I couldn't put a septic system in?
That's correct.
Does that have anything to do with annexation?
Yes.
Okay, on Bay Shore Drive, the two houses we're building, are they forced to connect to sewer? They can't keep the septic now that we're rebuilding the house?
That's correct.
So, this isn't any plan of mine? The house, the lot down on the end of their cul-de-sac, um, when they wanna build that house over there, are we?
Oh, this neighborhood?
Yes, in the cul-de-sac on their street. Is it gonna have to connect to sewer because it's within three hundred feet?
Oops, take a look, just to see. So, if there is a lot further down South Florida.
If it, yes.
That's not bill.
Right, if it's within three hundred feet, would it be forced to connect even if it was county?
Um, I don't know if it would be forced to connect, but, but the utilities department would analyze that for connection, because it's adjacent to city limits. So, all these lots are currently adjacent to city limits, right? So, any of these, say, have a failing septic tank or have to build a new house, and maybe this is the only other vacant line, I'm not sure.
Right, right, okay.
A city, uh, would have to analyze whether, um, engineering-wise and everything else, whether a sewer line would need to be extended down that street.
Okay, um, to touch on the, uh, impact fees, you asked about the surcharge. I've already paid that surcharge. There's no financial gain for me to annex into the city. I've paid that, I could have waited till getting annexed, that's been paid already. And regarding the sidewalk comment about one house with a sidewalk, I have no choice to put in a sidewalk. Would I have to be forced, Pat, to put in a sidewalk if I annex? With the new code for building a house anywhere?
If you pull the permit in the city, the city requires sidewalks.
Because they're requiring me to put a five-foot sidewalk, which is costing thousands of dollars. Um, we personally don't think it needs to be there, but the code reads, you build a new house, you have to put the sidewalk in. It's not a choice of mine. Um, if they don't want me to put a sidewalk in and y'all waive it, I won't build it. And as far as me not build, me not following the rules, I'm building exactly according to the code and according to what I am currently in at this particular time. So, I don't build anything that is not done correctly, that's all.
Can I just ask a summary?
Sure.
Okay, and, obviously, we, um, I can't speak for we, me. We, I don't like the idea of gaming if that's what happened. But let me ask any of the, uh, can I ask any of the people that spoke a question?
Look, y'all have gone off the reservation as far as the order of things anyways. It's the chair's meeting, so the chair's the one that you're gonna be asking on that one.
Okay, so, um, if this annexation didn't take place, and this house is already up, almost, right? The structure's already up, walls are go, I don't know if the walls are already up, um, but the structure's up. And was there complaints made to the county about this construction? If, if this is something that you guys aren't happy with?
Not as of yet, because we all, we heard from the get-go that, that it was, that it was gonna be hooked up to sewer. Before they even dug in there, it was coming out that it was gonna be hooked to sewer. And so, okay, you move sewer, you read the codes, if you're hooked sewer, it's pretty obvious you're going to search on internet, then you need to be annexed by, well, you don't have to be, per, since I already said that's it. But, so, this house was built to county, and all it is, kinda get it, annex, to get a bigger house without septic, but we need to own for it, and, uh.
But here's, but here, here's, and I, and I appreciate everything you're saying, but here, here's where I'm confused. What, other than somehow being punitive to him, what? I don't understand what the advantages or disadvantages if, if he goes ahead and gets annexed into the city and the house is up anyways.
It's the principle of the situation, and it's also a slippery slope, because you just pulled this up and said, oh, one of these people's septic available now, because we may have to connect in, but you're looking at the property somewhere to lock it now. So, how's that adjacent? We have body of ours, and that's the whole, it's between that and our houses.
But again, the house is there, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what, I don't understand what you're, again, other than, I understand your frustration, but I don't understand what, what you, if, either the, the house is either there as part of the city or the house is there as part of the county. Regardless, it's gonna be there, the, the wall's gonna be there, everything's gonna be there. I don't understand how it's, it diff, how your, how the life of the residents there is changed if it's a city or not a city. I, I'm, and I'm not trying to be argument, I just don't get it, so. You gotta get sworn in, you gotta get sworn in.
So, yeah, if you're going to come, you need to be on the record, so you need to come to the microphone.
This isn't being recorded over there.
And keep in mind, this, this is being recorded, it's a, it's a record for legal proceedings, so.
But I mean, you can't hear it.
I agree, yeah. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So sworn.
My name is Don Turek, uh, I'm at eleven-twenty-three South Florida Avenue, next to the vacant lot that, that Mr. Abbas was referring to, which I don't believe is within three hundred feet, so I don't think that's really an issue. The biggest issue, I think, in our neighborhood, and really got riled up, other than the fact that we felt as though something was happening kind of covertly, whether it was all kind of agreed to before and after. He explained things a little bit better today, that within, within a distance, you have to be hooked up to the, to the sewer. We all understand that now. We didn't before, I don't think. It's good that he can get on the sewer because we can't, and our street can't, because, uh, we've talked about it before. They need to build a pump station at the end of the street if they start coming down the street. They gotta pump it back out somehow, it's a dead end. What the biggest issue that our neighborhood has is about annexation. It's not about what Mr. Abbas is building, seems like a nice guy, beautiful house, coming in the neighborhood. It's the annexations, the crawl of annexation that's scaring us. We don't wanna be part of the city. I don't, we don't understand his motivation with wanting to be part of the city. That's up to him, that's his prerogative. We don't wanna be, we've already decided that, we've talked about this numerous times. And we feel as though calling things contiguous, you know, when you look at the word contiguous, it says adjoining property lines, or, you know, it's common property lines, things like that. And I know from the aspect of zoning that they kind of eliminate streets. And obviously, a few minutes ago, she just, uh, the lady eliminated water. That it doesn't, water isn't a dividing line. So, we're concerned about that. That's basically it. It has, it doesn't have to do with a sewer or his beautiful home he's building. He says he's gonna live there, we, we welcome him into the neighborhood. Some people don't believe that, and now they're losing a little bit of faith about what's going on when they're hearing the procedure that happened. I understand, you take a lot and you said, take the minimum side setbacks, what's the biggest house we can build? That's what I would do if I was a builder, highest best use. We understand that, God bless him. He's took, that lot's been available for years, nobody did it. He did it, and we're happy with him. We don't wanna be annexed. There's no motivation that he needs to be annexed, especially with a home that doesn't comply with Tarpon Springs. You go out and look at it, I, I'm surprised that our, our evaluator here didn't go out and personally look at it. You can see that it is not built to Tarpon Springs requirements. It's built to county, and God bless him, he has the right to build it six feet off each line. In Tar, Tarpon Springs, it's gotta be twenty-five feet total, ten or twelve and a half and twelve and a half. These aren't just little things, there's a whole list, I would say, two pages long, of things that don't comply with Tarpon Springs. This sets a precedent. I know you gotta have these certain criterias for being contiguous in order for the precedent to apply, but this sets a precedent. Is this what we want our city to be? I love the house, I like, I like the man, but I don't think that we should, just because we get a little extra revenue out of it, have that be the, the bill for, for doing something wrong. Or, I shouldn't say wrong, he did it right, but we're accepting him in as if it's okay to have this house now. That's it. It's, it's, it's our fear of the crawl of annexation. This is a voluntary annexation, I'm assuming, isn't it? It's not a referendum annexation.
Yes.
It's a voluntary annexation, he requested it. He's gonna have the same services whether you agree with it or disagree with it. You know, about the annexation part, he's still gonna have sewer, he's still gonna have water, nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one more?
Does it fall under discussion after we have a motion?
Yeah, it does.
We should probably hold it until, till we have a motion.
You're still in the public hearing at this point, so you would need to close the public hearing and call for a motion. I would just request, before you do so, to let the applicant have a final word.
Okay, would the applicant like to have a final word?
Um, yes. To, to what I was explained about the annexation process is that they wouldn't be impacted by that, and they wouldn't be forced to annex into the city. Um, so, I can understand if that was their concern all along, but that's the, what I was told during this process, that it wouldn't affect anybody else. Um, that it, it was just a choice that I wanted to be part of the city.
That's correct.
Thank you. Approach the microphone and state your name and address and, and be sworn.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, whoever else speaks, the applicant, because of his due process rights, has the opportunity to speak last. Do you, can you reach your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So sworn.
Okay, um, I'm Denise Wilks, um, my address is eleven-twelve South Florida Avenue. My big concern is that this house, um, for the lot size, is entirely too large. And, um, there, this happens to be a corner that a lot of people run that stop sign. It's gonna decrease visibility a lot. I'm a mother of two children, there's a lot of buses that go right there. Um, you've got the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school all take that, that turn um, from, um, Curlew onto South Florida to get to school. I, I myself leave at five in the morning to go to work, five-thirty. Okay, I leave at five-thirty in the morning, I still see people buzzing through that stop sign at five-thirty in the morning. What's it gonna be like during school hours? And if they can't see, that's my big concern, you know? That's all I'm saying. You know, down the road, if you're gonna plan on to put in a traffic light, perfect. But that three-way stop is just really hazardous. And if you put a great big tall structure, then we're not gonna be able to see, and we're gonna have a lot of issues. The other thing is, um, um, the fire trucks from, um, Station sixty-nine come racing down there too. And that's another issue, they're, they're not gonna be able to see. So, for what it's worth, think about it. So, for what it's worth, think about it.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to rebut?
Regardless of the annexation, just to make it clear to the lady who just spoke, the house is being built, the house will be, continue to be built. It is built to code. Whether the annexation is approved or not approved, the house is still gonna be there. The wall is still gonna be there, the wall meets the criteria, the visibility triangles are there. It's not gonna affect any visibility that she was just talking about. So I would just appreciate you guys to consider the facts, and consider what is involved here with the annexation process when you make your decision. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further public comments, I will entertain a motion.
Also, keep in mind, there are three applications, so you'll need to take one at a time, and have a motion for each.
Okay, so we'll start with a motion for the annexation.
And also keep in mind, too, because you are recommending action to the Board of Commissioners, it's not necessary for you to rule the same way on all three motions. You can recommend one and decline another if that's, if the evidence has presented itself that way.
What page are the three motions on?
First page.
The third page of the 2219.
Or the agenda.
Or you can look at the agenda, they're all listed on there.
Gotcha, thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve 22-08, is that the first one? No, am I wrong?
Twenty.
22-19, sorry.
Yep.
Yep.
I guess, sub A, is that the first one?
Yeah, you can say the annexation, I believe there's also an ordinance number, you can go by that, too.
So 22-19, the annexation?
That's ordinance number 2022-10.
Do we have a second? I'll ask for our attorney's help here. What do we, what do we do in this situation if we don't get a second?
It dies for lack of a second, you have to call for another motion. But there has to be a motion called, usually you make the motion in the affirmative. Doesn't mean you have to vote that way, but typically, under Robert's rules, as you guys know, you make the motion in the affirmative, it gets a second. That way it allows you to have discussion on the motion, and to take an action on the motion. Just because you second it, doesn't mean that you have to agree with the motion, you can vote against it. If you wish, you can make a motion in the negative, it's just a little bit, it's not typically done that way.
Okay, we still have a motion, is there a second?
In, in the spirit of discussion, Chair, I will second the motion.
All right. That brings us to board discussion.
And if I may, Chairperson, since I opened the Pandora's Box, it appears that I might want to just try and push some of that stuff back in. I'd like to start by sharing that I sometimes have verbal sharp elbows to our planning staff, and I want Patricia McNeese to know much, how much I appreciate her hard work. And I also want to share with Mr. Abbas that none of that was personal. It was just optics that has presented itself today. And part of the discussion, I'd also like to acknowledge the county residents who've taken the time to come and share their thoughts and concerns, because that helped us very much. I'd like to fall back, and that some of the people in the audience don't know, is that annexations are a particularly sore topic with this board member. And we have wrestled with these on various occasions, whether it's a single residence, such as this one, that seems to have completely innocuous ramifications. But those rules are exactly the same for giant development applications that have massive repercussions for our community. And although council continues to remind us that we're not allowed to think about anything other than, is it contiguous or not? That just doesn't make a lick of common sense at all. Although that is what we're reminded, and that's what we're supposed to act on. So I personally don't have, I'll even second what the gentleman from Pinellas County said, is that, hey, probably gonna be a nice house, gonna be a neighbor. But I do want to focus in on something critical that he brought up. This annexation opens the door and guarantees that each and every owner of that area now does not have a choice but to become part of the city of Tarpon Springs at some point in the future. And I think, I see Pat nodding her head a little bit. And it never dawned on me that not everyone wants to be part of the city of Tarpon Springs. In fact, I've become more concerned that outside developers, not in this room, have, and are going to use contiguous to take advantage, when possible, of our situation. And we've had past projects of that. So that's why I'm perhaps more thoughtful, and I opened that Pandora's Box, and maybe used a word that wasn't perfect. But it struck me extremely odd that this, and we've seen other annexations, weren't addressed long before construction started. That's it, just that it strikes me as odd. And that we get these projects annexed when something is nearly built, and you can't help but think, what the heck? Why wasn't this done at the appropriate time? I'm not gonna weigh in on the pros and cons necessarily, just that I wanted to share those thoughts. And I know that annexation is gonna be, continue to be a very serious topic of discussion, of those that want in, and those that don't want in. And now I can see that those need to be weighed equally in that hand. And with that, that's the end of my discussion.
Well, and I think, yeah, as, as you say, we've, we've had several cases in the last year or so that, that this same issue has come up, and it's something that, that kind of sticks in, in most of our throats, because we feel like these projects should be coming through the city in the first place. That's not the applicant's fault, we have to keep in mind. It's not the staff's fault, it's the, it's the system, and the ordinances, and the relationship between the city and the county as it currently exists. And that's something in our workshop that we'll discuss a great deal, I suspect, but that's not for discussion tonight. I do have one final question for Pat, though. In the previous cases where we saw things like that, it was almost coming to us that you must annex, and that they can't get service without that. And now it sounds like staff is, is taking a little softer position on that, that they, that they can still get service if we don't annex. Is that the case?
If that came across in past applications, that was not intended. The city serves this property, and those properties that have to annex, and the city will serve them. If an annexation is denied, they, they will still serve them. And if I may go a little further, just to make sure there's a point that's clear in your minds, as far as this neighborhood, this site does not create contiguity for lots that are not contiguous now. These lots, and it's kind of hard to see, I was gonna try to zoom in, but, but there's two lots here, one here, and one here, and then all of these are contiguous by statutory definition. This one's contiguous to the north. This one, I suppose there could be a question whether it create, whether this site might create contiguity for this lot. That, that's a question, because, because they don't line up. But these lots on, on the east side are already contiguous to the city. So, so annexation of this lot will not create a new contiguity that doesn't exist now. I just want to make sure you all understand that, aside from the building and all those issues.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Would any other board members like to comment?
So just for clarification, denial of the annexation does not prevent the applicant from tying into the...
That's correct.
To the, to the utilities.
That's correct.
So the annexation is not necessary for him to
Well.
build his house and live in it, or sell it, or do whatever he wants?
So the annexation is required, right? So the applicant must apply for annexation to get city water and sewer. If it is denied, based on the criteria, and, you know, I, I don't know, Erica can help me if, if there's some scenario otherwise, but if it's denied based on the criteria, because it doesn't meet the criteria, then the applicant would still hook up the city water and sewer and pay the surcharge.
Anyone else have any further comments before we call a vote? Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Andriotis?
Yes.
Mr. Kulianos?
No.
Mr. Vessi?
No.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to application 2208, site plan approval for a car wash.
No, we are, still have two more motions on the last application.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun, yes.
Because remember, you are recommending to the Board of Commissioners, so you have to vote on all three.
Right, so this would be a motion for the future land use map amendment on item 2219.
And this is ordinance 22-08.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, if no one makes a motion, you can pass the gavel and make a motion. But this board does have to vote on this item.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, now you said 22-08?
Correct, that is the ordinance number.
Okay, 22-08. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Do we have a second?
Chair, in the spirit of discussion and respect for my fellow board member, I will second that motion.
Is there any board discussion on this item? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andriotis?
Yes.
Mr. Kuz Kulianos?
No.
Mr. Vessi?
No.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right, now, the zoning map amendment also associated with 22-19.
And that's ordinance 22-09, for purposes of the motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve 22-09, the zoning map?
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any board discussion on this item? Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Andriotis?
Yes.
Mr. Kulianos?
No.
Mr. Vessi?
No.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right. Item number seven, application 22-08, site plan approval for a car wash at 41041 US Highway 19 North, in the Highway Business Zoning District. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, this is a proposal for a car wash located at 41041 US Highway 19 North. It's going to be located between Court Street and Lemon Street, on the east side of 19. You might remember there was an exotic cars, service, auto sales and service station there, or business there. That's been demolished, and the car wash is proposed for that site. So this is a redevelopment of that site. And we have a car wash building, and some payment kiosks, vacuums, parking. That's pretty much what's proposed for the site. This is in the Highway Business Zoning District, in the commercial general, future land use category. This is a survey of the property, showing the previous buildings that were demolished on site. You'll note that the property had, or has, still has, two access points on US 19, one on Court Street, and one on Lemon Street. This is the site plan, the applicant proposes to close these 19 access points, and use the side street access points. Other features, which are outlined in your staff report, especially on page three, some of the features of the site plan include retention of two live oak trees over on Court Street, and then additional landscaping, 20% reduction in impervious surface. This is all sodded area, the applicant is removing pavement for this site. Removal of the, the big bright car lot lights, what I call them, and installation of the recently adopted city design for lighting and signage. Removal of a septic tank in connection to city sewer. So those are some of the features included with this site. This is the landscape plan, again, retaining the two live oak trees that exist here, and then trees around the property as well. This is an elevation view of the project. I thought I had a view of the, oh, there's a view of the payment kiosks in your packet. I do have a full set of plans here, the large size. I didn't print those in your packet, because as you've seen lately, they just do not print correctly for some reason. But I do have a set available for, if you need to refer to those. So the car wash is a use by right in the Highway Business Zoning District. This is typical strip commercial development that's allowed in the commercial general and the Highway Business District. And so this is appropriate for this area. So that makes it compliant with the city's comprehensive plan. And it is coming into compliance with some of the comprehensive plan items, including the impervious surface ratio of 85%. The applicant has reduced it to 73%. Right now, it's 91%. The concurrency and facilities impacts are acceptable. The city can serve the property. The applicant has shown a net increase of 44 peak hour trips, and that's without doing a pass-by capture study on this car wash, which, in my humble opinion, is on the correct side of the road, because that's the big traffic afternoon, and, and this one's on the east side, as opposed to some of the others you've seen going in on the west side. I, I don't know if people wash their cars more in the morning or the afternoon, but I'm wanting to bet afternoon. So that was not done. You know, we would expect trip generation to be reduced even further if that pass-by capture analysis had been done. if that pass-by capture analysis had been done. Again, improving on the drainage and, in addition to reducing impervious surface, we're complying with the city's drainage code with this project, which, of course, the previous site was developed years ago and did not comply with that code. And this project is expected to be able to comply with all other city codes. You have a list of recommended conditions on pages one and two of the staff report. There is sewer to the site. It may not extend quite to the point where connection is required, and so we wanted to put a condition that if that line, this industry, doesn't extend to that point, the developer is responsible for extending that line. The applicant will be required to close those two U.S. 19 North access points and connect to the sidewalk that's on 19. And the applicant has chosen to do public art and is strongly encouraged to get with the Public Art Committee early so that the certificate of occupancy isn't held up with that process. The property does have an active code case on it. The property is currently owned by CVS Drugstore, and that code case is in fine status, meaning fines are being assessed, daily fines. So the applicant will, if the applicant purchases, completes purchase of the property, that code case would become theirs. The city would not issue a building permit for vertical construction until that's resolved. So they will have to resolve that code case. The developer is responsible for meeting the Land Development Code. Construction plans have to be consistent with the site plan, and site plan approval lasts for one year unless a building permit is applied for. Are there any questions on this one?
Anyone have questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? All right, and are there any members of the public here to comment on this item? Seeing none, I guess I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We approve application 22 dash zero eight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andriotis?
Could we do discussion first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Let's have board discussion.
That was going so fast, I couldn't get through the paperwork. Forgive me. I just need a quick breather here. In fact, could my discussion include a question of staff? So the discussion would be, I didn't see the TRC Board, TRC Committee review as part of this site application. Did I miss that? Technical Review Committee findings?
Yes. Well, on page two of the staff report, we did give the... This application went to the TRC twice. The last date was on March 10th of 2022.
Page two.
Yeah, it just mentions...
Do I have a different... Oh, forgive me. The package is kind of deep there. So page two?
Of the staff report.
Okay, well, I don't need to find it, and I'm assuming that within that TRC review that Utilities, of course, signed off on it and said, "You bet. Otherwise, it probably wouldn't be here with us." So here's the discussion point, thank you, is that it's a car wash. It uses proposed 5,000 gallons of water a day, which isn't a huge amount. But this is, the discussion's actually going to lead somewhere. It's going to lead to that next package. Is that I would feel more comfortable if we were to see a more detailed analysis of the impacts of that water on our city because we have never heard anything other than yes, meaning that it doesn't matter what is applied for. It's always, "We got enough." "We got enough sewer. We got enough water. No problem." And I just suspect that at some point, it's not going to be that, or at some point in the future, that we're going to hear, "We need a new water plant because suddenly we don't have enough water." And I know that we do, and it's there. But I would want to use this one as an example for future that I would feel more comfortable if whomever is in charge of that at TRC put their name on it and said, "I've analyzed this, and I'm willing to say we don't have an issue with this or other future developments" so that sometime way in the future, when we are short, that we can come back and said, "Bill, Bill said it was fine. How did we get there?" So that's the end of my discussion.
Any other board discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Andriotis? Mr. Kulianos?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right. That brings us down to item number eight, discussion item, the set agenda topics for the May 9th workshop. Pat or Renee or whoever pulled this together, I have to say, at least as far as the comments that I had, you did a pretty good job of simplifying them and boiling them down to headings that appears to me to include everything that I had in mind, at least. Does it... Anyone else see anything missing or anything else we want to address? I guess not.
No. I didn't make it to the bottom yet.
Oh, okay.
I think just the one that I had mentioned, if it was relevant or not, since it is the public forum, is the TRC, and it might have been kicked out because I might have submitted it and it didn't make the cut. Technical Review Committee. Here's, in the nutshell, I'll repeat myself, is that I don't feel there's an in-depth analysis or it's trailing in a way that by the time Public Works realizes that we have overextended ourselves or that the maintenance associated with these lines that we're going to extend comes back to bite us in the heel that it's too late then, and that maybe not enough analysis is being done for the extension of these services, oh, related to annexations. Just a thought, if TRC would be available on, if that made any sense, Pat, and you thought it passed muster.
Yeah, and I...
It is there.
Yeah, I was going to say, if there's anything we missed trying to summarize, yeah.
Water and sewer utilities analysis requirement. Yeah.
We may not have picked everything up from the memos that you all sent, so...
No, it's a good simplification, I think, of what we all gave to you. I know mine was way too wordy. All right. Well, it looks like we've got an agenda then. Do we need to vote to approve this as the agenda, or do we just go with it?
On the items that we're discussing for the workshop agenda?
Yes.
Well, it's on your... You don't have to vote on it, but there are several topics on the agenda. You all have not discussed those topics before as they were submitted to Pat and then put on this agenda. So this item is on here for you all to discuss which items you'd like to see on your workshop agenda and to come to... You don't have to do a consensus. It can just be a simple majority about which topics you'd actually like to discuss at your workshop. Because if I understood correctly, there were only two people that submitted?
Three.
Three people that submitted topics for the workshop. So, you know, by default, there's two people, or several other people, some who are not here that did not have the opportunity to do that, so...
I mean...
So again, this is just a discussion item, so it's meant to...
To me, I like all of them. I mean, maybe some prioritization would need to happen to make sure we hit the most critical ones. But I think if we don't hit them all in this session, well, it's a discussion to be continued, the way I look at it.
Well, and I would say two things. One, you have a limited amount of time to do your workshop. So I would look maybe to suggest to, like you said, prioritize. And two, there are some topics on that list that, even if you were to discuss them, there wouldn't really be a recommendation that would be proper to make to the Board of Commissioners because it's not something that this board has the power or the authorization to make a recommendation to change. So it may not be something that would be, while you may wish to discuss it based on the powers and duties that this board has, it may not be worth your while to do so because you would never be able to make the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
What I would ask is, now, obviously, if there's things on here that we would be precluded by state law from doing, that's one thing. But if there's things on here that we're precluded from doing by our current code...
Or perhaps your charter.
We want to discuss those, and I think the charter too, possibly, because the City Commission has the ability to change that, and we have the ability, either as individuals or as this group, to request that the City Commission consider changing.
So you do not have the power or the duty as this board to make a suggestion to the commission to change the charter? That's not within your prescribed powers and duties in the Land Development Code. The Charter Review Commission is the prescribed board that has those powers and duties. And so that's, obviously, and you understand, that's a separate board. They have separate tasks to do. As an individual, if one of you or each of you'd like to go to your commissioners individually and not as a whole, and make suggestions to the charter, you can certainly do so, and the commission can certainly choose to bring a charter amendment and put it out to the electorate. There's really only one thing in the charter that you would be asking them to vote on, and that would be whether or not this board is advisory or not.
And if I might suggest, we could take these topics. I could work with Erica to put them into groups, things that are under your purview now, and then other things, and maybe that way you could knock out those ones that are under your purview that you really want to get, say, in front of the board first. And then if you run out of time, you could prioritize the rest at the meeting, the way you want, maybe.
And there are quite a few that you have the power to change on that list.
Yeah.
So I like Pat's suggestion, if that's what the board would wish to do.
It would be particularly interesting if you could break them down categorically like that for us because it would be interesting, from my perspective at least, to know which ones fall into which of those categories. But I definitely don't want to preclude consideration of things, at least within the zoning ordinance and our enabling ordinance, that we could suggest to the City Commission that they might want to change. And I have heard talk from some city commissioners that there may even be a joint workshop between this board and them.
I would caution you, because if there has been talk between the city commissioners that's not at a public meeting, that would be a violation of sunshine. So I would be real careful with what you are hearing. Second, I'm not so sure that's permissible, but I would defer to the city attorney on that. I am meeting with him tomorrow to talk about various topics within this community, so I can certainly breach that with him, and then I will let staff know. But that would be up to the city attorney. But again, I would caution whatever rumors you're hearing because that's not come up at a commission meeting.
I'd like to chime in and just give a heartfelt thank you to Pat because I know that this is an additional workload to you. I know you're busy. I'm just assuming that it is, so just go, okay, that this takes effort, and I appreciate your time and the rest of the staff's time that's listening to us and working together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm a little uncomfortable with this stuff getting so filtered down that we can't have conversation with the... And it's going to be in the open. We're having, this is going to be an open conversation with the Board of Commissioners. And if some of these things are outside our purview, well, then they're just useless conversations. But I don't want to see this list get just filtered down off. I mean, I respect the chairman, and I think if anyone should prioritize this, it should be you.
Well, I'd like to start just by seeing it categorized, perhaps, and then... I mean, I don't think we can sit here tonight and prioritize it.
Well, I think you have to because this is the last meeting before your workshop, and you would need to have an agenda before then. So I can tell you, like, the training or the orientation for new board members is not something that this board has the purview to make recommendations on or to... That's an administrative task that would come from the city manager and the department heads. The board presentation to decisions, that's something that you could certainly make a recommendation on. That is in your enabling ordinance about who makes those recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. Right now, it says staff. You can certainly recommend that it be the chairman of the board or a designated person. I don't really understand what the staff recommendation on projects is, but we can certainly, that's something you can discuss. Staff is a party to the application, so they have a right to make a recommendation. You don't have to take that. Board member suggestions to applicants for project improvements, that's something that's kind of outside the scope of the quasi-judicial capacity. However, for those things that are legislative, I don't know that you necessarily need to have a code change to do that, but that's something that you can certainly make a recommendation. It's legislative. They can choose to adhere to it or not. If it's quasi-judicial, you are absolutely by law prohibited to do so. I think that was in the memo. Potential for final decisions by the board by application type, of course, that goes to your charter. So that's something that, like I said, as an individual, you could certainly bring to your commissioners as a private citizen, but that this board does not have the ability to bring to the Board of Commissioners. The hearing process for large developments, that's largely an administrative issue. But honestly, that, I would defer to staff because they're the ones that have to bring it before you. That's also a departmental issue, so if that's something that the planning department head would like to change, you can certainly make a recommendation to them, but that really doesn't have to do with your powers and duties. The sustainability board input on project review, you can certainly discuss that. That's part of the Land Development Code and what gets reviewed with TRC and things of that. So that's something you can discuss. Project revisions after board decisions to be heard by the board. You know, that actually goes to state statute. You guys function as the LPA, so unless there would be some reason for it to come back to you after having made an advisory recommendation of the Board of Commissioners, I'm not so sure that that would be proper, but I think that's something to discuss and figure out if it is proper or not. Water and sewer utilities analysis requirement, that's part of the LDC, so you can certainly discuss that. Board identified deficiencies. I'm not specifically sure what deficiencies need to be addressed, if it's in the application process, if it's in the review process. If it's within your Land Development Code and it's part of a codified review process, of course, yes. You can certainly discuss that and make recommendations. If it's just deficiencies in... I want a site plan review with every annexation that comes in. That's something that's in your code, so you can make that recommendation, too. As long as it's within the Land Development Code, you can certainly discuss that and make those recommendations. Annexation criteria and county project development review. This board doesn't really have the purview to talk about county project development. The annexation criteria, you can certainly discuss the city's annexation criteria, but there is state annexation criteria, which the city has parroted, copied. So to the extent that it differs from the state statute, you can certainly discuss that and make recommendations for change to the Board of Commissioners. And that includes making things more stringent because, remember, as a city, you are bound by general law, but if you can make things more stringent, not more open, so you can discuss that. Park and recreation deficiencies. Again, I'm not really sure what the deficiencies are, but it has to do with the LDC. are, but it has to do with the LDC. Of course, you can discuss and make recommendations. Reduce allowed code exemptions, that has to do with the LDC. So yes, you can certainly discuss that and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. Same with strengthening the multimodal transportation standards. That has to do with your comprehensive plan and your LDC, so 100%, you can discuss those and make recommendations. Same with the RV and boat storage, same with setback reduction limits, and same with density in the coastal high hazard areas. So for those things that Pat listed on that first, or Renee, rather, listed on that first page, and the mission statement, I mean, that would really go to your, I mean, your mission statement is your enabling ordinance, so they would be one in the same. The Board of Commissioners kind of dictates you your mission statement, because they're the board that appoints you to these positions. And then your philosophy kind of comes from the state statute, because that's what the legislators told you that this board is governed to do. But you may wish to put something in your rules of procedure, although I'm not sure that that'd be the right place for it either. I think that is something you could certainly do if you're an independent organization, but being an appointed city board, I'm not so sure a mission statement is proper. And I think that encapsulated all of the topics that were set forth, and Renee kind of summarized them. So as you can see, a majority of those are things that you have the power to discuss and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on how to change. And then I, of course, now that we've categorized them, I leave it to the board to determine how you want to rank those and which ones you'd like to discuss.
I mean, a number of them are relatively simple, and I don't, I don't know that they require a lot of time. Then there's a few of the others that require some time. I don't really want to reduce the list. I could reorganize it, or we could reorganize it, but I think everything on the list is important to consider.
When you say, "We can't discuss," or "we can discuss," this is, this workshop's not going to be a quasi judicial hearing, right?
I'm talking from, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So when you say, "we can or we can't discuss something in a workshop that's open to the public," whether we have, if we want to discuss, you know, the sunrise tomorrow, even though we have no purview over that, I don't understand why we can't have conversation.
Correct. So maybe that was a misnomer. If I did say you can't discuss it, I apologize. You don't have the power or the duty in order to effect change regarding that topic.
I understand, but we can discuss.
So you can certainly discuss it.
Okay.
And remember, workshops are, typically, there's no public input at a workshop. It's just the public can be here to listen to you discuss. That's the forum that it is. So I was just, my advice to you is, from a legal perspective, since you do not have the power or duty to change some of those things, and you do have the opportunity to have this workshop, which technically, traditionally don't have the power to do, you may wish to use that time in order to talk about things that you can affect change on. The rest of those things, you know, the City Attorney will advise the department head and advise staff on if those go to the Board of Commissioners or not.
Right.
You know, because that's something that staff has to comply with the ordinance, too. The City Manager, the department heads, they have to comply with the code as well. So if it's something that they, the City Attorney, and I'm very confident that he will say, that the City Attorney will say, "Well, they don't have the power, the ability under their enabling ordinance to make these recommendations," that doesn't need to go before the Board of Commissioners. So yes, you can certainly discuss it. I just don't know how far you'll get with discussing something that you don't have the ability to make a recommendation or effect change on.
That being said, and thank you for clarifying that, forgive me for interrupting, is that those items that we do not, such as the sunrise, that we can discuss, we could go as individual citizens and represent those words or those thoughts or that discussion to the Board of Commissioners, just not formally recognize as a board, or the board wouldn't, this PLA would not be forwarding that. Did that make any sense? I kind of screwed that up the last minute.
I think what you're understanding is, you would like to discuss them at the workshop, but since it won't be presented by the board, you could go as an individual after having discussed it as the PNZ to the Commissioners and saying, "As an individual, I think we should do this."
Yes.
Okay. I caution you when you do that. You can, yes, you can do that. I caution you when you do that, though, because now you're saying, "I've had this workshop as a member, appointed member of this board, and I'm now going to the Commission and saying, 'Based on the things that we discussed as a whole at this board,' now, if you don't say those things, that's good. We've had that discussion before. That's fine. The other thing, too, is now that we're having that conversation here, it's a little hard to go in front of the Commission and say, 'Me, as an individual, I think we should do this,' even though we've talked at length about having that discussion as a board." But nothing is stopping you. I'm just, again, remember, I'm here to advise you. I'm just here to tell you the boundaries at which you're allowed to go. Whether you heed my advice, I would hope that you did. I am board certified in city, county, local government law. I'm a partner at my firm, and I'm pretty good at what I do. So I would hope that you would heed my advice, but if you choose not to, by all means. You know, you guys have the hard job. I don't.
I think you helped clarify how we would have to present those things, and thank you.
And just maybe a suggestion, so if you would like to keep all these topics on the list, again, we could, we could kind of try to divide them into two groups, and we just went through what those were, and then you'll get that packet a week ahead of time. Maybe we'll attach your procedures again, and maybe that section of Charter, maybe some backup information for you. And then you'll have a list, if you want to think about the priorities during the week and then kind of prioritize at the start of the meeting, would that help? And then-
That would probably be helpful, yeah. Once we see them all broken down, yeah. And I think there's, there's quite a few of them that are, there's not a lot to discuss. It's just sort of a suggestion contained in the, in the line item, really. And I think, I mean, I don't know, now I'm going back and starting to take things off, but I mean, we could talk about the mission statement for all of that meeting and three more-
Yeah.
-if we were going to do that. So I think, I agree, Erica, completely. Our mission statement is established by the code. We have to pretty much accept that, and I don't see that there's any point in belagering a discussion about it when we have actual items where we could potentially bring about some valuable change to talk about.
Well, and keep in mind, too, you do have that enabling ordinance, and you can make suggested changes to that. So in a way, that would be kind of, in a manner to discuss your mission statement, so.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? Okay. Thanks, Pat. That's very helpful. And what does that, there's nothing else here. No, just staff comments and board comments, which I think we pretty much just had. And unless somebody else wants to say something else, we're adjourned.